Welcome everyone. My name is Alan Swain and I'm running for Congressional District Two, Wake County, to be our voice, or your voice, in Washington DC. We're fortunate to have with us tonight for several of our Wake County School Board candidates. They'll get a chance to introduce themselves in a moment here and we have a good chance for some good, great Q and A. What I want to do is explain to you, we think it's critical that we do these kind of forums to introduce not only these four talented candidates for office, but in light of everything going on with COVID-19, this is probably one of those times when you want to make sure that what we do for our children and the education is critical. Not only do we want to take care of the livelihoods of the people with businesses and protect the people in our healthcare heroes in the hospitals, but the decision is being made right now with regard to school board and what we're going to do for our children across the state, across the US. If you don't think that politics is playing in some of this area, sure, and that's what we're going to discuss with some of these candidates tonight. But it's a critical time in how we move forward as a nation, as a state, and as a county to make sure we take care and we don't let our children lag behind with regard to education. It's probably important for us. Several here have either grandchildren or children in most cases. I have grandchildren that go to school here in Wake County and you only want the best for them. So without further ado, what I want to do is introduce, we have four people here. We have Ms. Karen Carragher, we have Steve Bergstrom, Greg Hahn, and Deborah Prickett. But what I'm going to do is make it real simple. We'll start with District One, and that's Ms. Deborah Prickett, and we'll introduce Deborah to the floor.
Well, thank you so much, Alan. It's just a pleasure to be here and I think it's great that Alan is reaching out and trying to make it so that everyone can at least meet the candidates and I just appreciate this opportunity. To tell you a little bit about myself, I'm actually a Wake County native. Lived here my entire life and went to all public schools and my son also went to all public schools. So I'm certainly a school advocate and I actually have 30 years of education experience and probably a little over that. I worked with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for about 11 years and during that time I was a federal program administrator who monitored after-school learning centers across the state. I also was the character education consultant for the state and in that position I worked with all 115 North Carolina school districts. It was just a great opportunity and I loved it. Before that, I was a teacher and a counselor with the Wake County School System for about 20 years. I was elected to the school board, which is another important milestone in my life in 2009, and served for four years until 2013. And during that time, I really got to know the school system inside and out. And I've been really thinking about this position and I know that years ago I put in some very effective changes and I've been watching things through the years and they're kind of at the point now where I think they need some tweaking done maybe. And so it kind of brought me back to thinking about running for the school board. I have friends and family members and lots of teacher friends and I know the child's education is just so important. And just two other things about my education, just so that people kind of know my actual educational background. I have a master's degree in counseling from North Carolina Central University and a bachelor's degree in English Education from North Carolina State University.
Great, thank you. Next up is District Two, Greg Hahn.
Hey, good evening, Alan. Thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce myself and I really appreciate this platform. A little bit about myself, four years in the Navy, two years of that was Presidential Honor Guard in DC. And then I had a top secret clearance and went into the Pentagon, worked with the Joint Chiefs of Staff. So I was in the nation's capital for about four years and I stayed there and got involved with political campaigns, presidential, for about a year and a half, moved back to New England where I'm originally from and worked on a gubernatorial campaign up in New Hampshire in 2002. Then I was a campaign manager for the Lieutenant Governor in Vermont in 2004. And at that point, I have four children and then I got involved in sales and I'm in sales to this day. I moved down to North Carolina in 2006. I have my oldest, who graduated from Hunt High School in Wilson. And then we moved out to Fuquay around four years ago. My second oldest graduated from Fuquay High and then I've got a sophomore and a junior currently in Fuquay High. Ones in the band, ones in soccer, so very involved with the public school system. All of my kids have gone to the public school system. What caused me to run is, I'm running as a parent, I'm a concerned parent, and I think what's on everyone's minds right now is the decision that was made yesterday. We all hit hard in March about the online virtual learning and I think going forward, it's on everyone's minds, how can we best not fail our kids with education? They all, they need, the studies that have shown that they need some online, I mean, physical learning in the classroom. I had two kids that went through IEPs for several years and face-to-face is so important and we have to address how do we handle the IEPs with the kids that need that. I think right now with what's going on in this country, I feel honored to be running. I want to hear from parents, I want to hear from teachers because I only have so many ideas, but I really would like to know, and I appreciate this platform, to really find out what parents are thinking and what teachers are thinking. And I think that's important to collaborate and to find out what, where do we go as a team? I'm looking forward to collaborating with the candidates on this call to better educate our kids.
Great, thank you, Greg. Next up is District Eight, Steve Bergstrom.
Hi, thank you, Alan, for the opportunity again. I just want to echo what Greg and Deborah have said and I'm sure what Karen will say, just the responsibility and humility that we feel in running for this position. It's not a, something that is glorified or something that I think either one of us have sought after for a long time, but it's just a, something that we felt was needed. And I understand and I echo what Greg said, there's a lot of focus right now on COVID-19 and reopening plans. But I just want to, you know, reiterate that all of us decided to run for more than just the issues that we're facing right now. There's, there's a variety of issues and I know that we'll get to that tonight. I'm a father of four, I have three kids in the public school system. I myself went through the public school system along with my six siblings and my 22 nieces and nephews. I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force, I have business experience dealing with contracts from various companies, DoD, Lockheed Martin, and Boeing. I'm currently a pilot at a major airline and I have a master's degree in political science and a bachelor's in business. So that's just a little bit about me. I'm sure that as we go on throughout the night, we'll hear a lot of our concerns and some of our answers that we have to various issues, but a term that we have in the airline business, or at least in my airline, is that when an emergency happens or when there's some type of problem with, with either the airplane or something else, we, the pilots are asked to expand our team. I don't think that we have all the answers, like Greg said, but I look forward to engaging with parents and engaging with experts who do have the answers and finding the best resolution for the issues and concerns that families face today. So I look forward to talking about that tonight. Thanks so much again.
Steve, Karen, District Nine?
Yes, hi, thank you for having us tonight. I am as well a Wake County native. I went through the Wake County Public Schools and actually my grandma, almost 100 years now ago, went to Cary School and my dad went to Cary High. I also have two kids, one just graduated from Green Hope and hopefully soon we'll be heading to college if all goes well. And my daughter is a junior in the public school system. And I am going to start my ninth year for Wake County as a special ed instructional assistant. So I have kind of that background. I also started as a social worker. I went to Meredith College and my degree is actually in social work and I started my family and child advocacy back when I was in college. I was hired full-time before I graduated and worked with therapeutic foster homes, which really entailed a lot of systems, working with court systems, school systems, family systems, and mental health systems. And that perspective, I think, brings a lot to the table, especially considering the circumstances that are going on right now. And I feel like I really bring a unique combination to the table of knowledge and understanding of what's needed to improve our schools. And I'm really here because as a, I've kind of viewed this as a student myself in Wake County, a parent, and also as an educator, I look at it through all three lenses and I feel like I have a lot of concerns and I hear a lot of concerns that need to be addressed and I'm hopeful that this, the board can be seen more as serving those that we are here to serve and put the focus back on the students and what their needs are and educating all students. I'm quite concerned about some of the issues going on with achievement gap and not meeting everyone's needs educationally. So that's kind of what got me here.
Great, we thank you all for, we're all volunteers running for office. It's never easy. I want to thank you because I know what you're going through because I'm doing the same things. It's never, it's never easy and it can sometimes be, you kind of wonder, when do I get my life back? Well, you're all going to win, so you may never get the life you had before you signed up and volunteered to file. So I thank you all for that support. That's the first question here, I'll throw it out on the table, let's see who wants to take first shot at it. What are your thoughts on Wake County Public School Systems Plan B and may as well talk about Plan C too, which may be coming, which begins with online instruction only for the foreseeable future, then transitioning to hybrid instruction at a later date?
I'll start, I guess.
All right.
Well, I guess for the Plan B transition that was announced yesterday, as, again, I'm looking at it through a couple of different angles. As an educator, I'm concerned and I do want to thank, remember Martin, who brought up staff expectations and when is that going to be made known? Because that was a big piece that was missing yesterday. So that's a concern I have about the plan. I also have a concern as a parent, a lot of uncertainties I feel like were left because now there is no specific timeframe to get students back. There's no, except for pre-K and special ed students in regional programs, the other students are kind of left with uncertainty on how it will even look when they come back or when they, if they do come back. So I guess for me, I was left with more questions and concerns. I do understand the safety concerns, but I also feel like a lot of parents are looking for more answers and staff are definitely looking for more answers and having, being able to make informed decisions.
Alan, I'd be glad to answer the question, but we had a little glitch there and lost me and so I didn't get to hear the question. So if you would be so kind to at least give me the short version of it.
What are your thoughts on Wake County Public School Systems Plan B, which begins with online instruction only for the foreseeable future, then transitioning to hybrid instruction at a later date? What are your thoughts on, do you have enough information? You know, Karen just said she has more questions having, after they've disclosed what they want us to do.
Well, I definitely have more questions as well. Things just change weekly, it seems. This has certainly been something to deal with, with the COVID-19 situation. I've never seen anything like it during my lifetime. Never seen the school systems have to be so flexible and have to accommodate, I guess, so many different learning styles, so many different, you know, family agendas and you've got year-round schools, you've got traditional schools, a lot of different schedules. It's just a very complicated situation. On top of that, when the school systems go to work out things like this, the, it has to, sometimes things come down from the state as well. So not only are they looking at local concerns and situations, they're looking at what's coming down from the governor's office, what's coming down from the state level that's trickling down to the school systems. And I think with Raleigh and the surrounding areas with Wake County being so large, we're kind of one of the hotspots and it has been more of a challenge, I think, for our area. The A-Day, B-Day situation that they were kind of coming up with, where they were gradually going to let the kids transition back to school, seemed to me to be possibly inappropriate way of bringing them in. But now it's like causing parents to like all of a sudden just stop and reassess everything because they don't know what to do now and they're having to go to Plan D and E and F to try to find something for their kids. So I'm going to kind of, I did hear Karen's response a few minutes ago, but I do agree with her that there are a lot more unanswered questions.
Okay, Steve?
Sorry, Greg, I jumped in there first. Greg and I actually had a chance to talk a little bit about this last night, so I'll let him add whatever, whatever he wants or subtract whatever he wants from, from my answer on this. Yes, there are many questions and yes, this was an extremely difficult scenario that the school board and leadership at the state level had to, had to deal with. My point, and I put out a video yesterday just kind of addressing this, I believe in addressing the situation. And as the 15th largest district, district in the nation and the largest school district in the, in the state, the school board should have been leveraging that position to be able to put forth their plans and their ideas on how we could safely reopen. And I'm not advocating that everybody returns their kids to school. I'm advocating for choice and that seems to be the core principle that seems to be lost in all this discussion is that there needs to be choice in these decisions. Families who have unique circumstances and don't want to return their kids to school because of those unique circumstances, or just because of their personal feelings on whether or not to return their kids to school, they shouldn't be forced into a situation where they have to return them. But at the, at the same token, I recently saw a study just the other day that said 43% of Wake County families are in favor of returning their kids to school full-time in August. That's a lot of kids. And I'm, in fact, Greg and I, sitting down at dinner yesterday, our server is a single mom and she has no clue what she's going to do for her kids. She, she felt completely lost and we had to empathize with her just in saying, I'm sorry, I don't know what I would do if I was in your position either. Single fathers, you're going to have to deal with the same situation. So if this school board had attacked this situation from March or April and started to reach out to the community, hey, what do you want? Here's the data we're seeing, not focusing on just one data point of cases, but focusing on multiple data points that the CDC, American Pediatrics Association is putting out and looking at examples of other areas that have reopened safely, even looking at the business sector. If we had stopped all airline travel, can you imagine how bad this economy would be right now? But we had to find a way to safely do it and we've done so. Flight attendants, pilots, we're all having to be essential workers and we welcome that because we know we're safely accomplishing the mission. And that's the same mindset that should be taken in when we're reopening or talking about reopening schools for our kids. We have to do it. There's too much at stake to, to not even talk about a choice. So that's my position.
Yeah, so what Steve was saying, we had the benefit of talking last night and I am a single father and I have two kids. So this is hitting me very personally. There's more studies that show there's more harm than good for kids to not go to school. We're social creatures and we have to evaluate what school's going to look like, yes, but we also can't be fearful and say, you know what, we're not just going to go back. Because I'm in a situation now since yesterday to try to figure out, what am I going to do? I'm in sales and my numbers have hurt the last several months because of COVID. They have ceased all travel for me to my company to see people face-to-face. And if you've ever been in sales, that's an intimate moment to have a face-to-face communication with, with a client. That's intimate education from teacher to student. And I had to justify today on my weekly, my yearly review about my numbers. And of course they're understanding, but at the same time, it's like, okay, well, you got to adjust, you got to change your game plan and you have to make things happen. And I think for us to just throw up our hands sometimes and just say, you know what, we're just going to go virtual and indefinitely without really looking at studies and data and all that stuff, I think we're doing our kids a disservice. That's just, and I'm speaking from the heart, which is another reason why I'm running. Because I'm in a situation now where I can relate to most single parents and as a parent, what we're going to do now.
I appreciate that. As a kind of a follow-up, I'd like to know, what, this is to Steve with his four children, what's the, what are the Bergstroms going to do with the current state for school? How are you going to manage it with your children being home all the time like they were for the summer?
I'm in a fortunate position. I have a wife who has a bachelor's in psychology from ECU. She understands this situation very well. We are a blended family. I have three children who I have full custody of from a previous marriage and we have a two-year-old. But I'm fortunate enough where she stays home and she helps the kids. So we're going to augment our kids' learnings like we do through the summer. We're just going to continue to do that once school starts. However, I just, I cannot imagine, so my wife and I got married five years ago. I can't imagine if I was in this situation prior to meeting my wife, how I would deal with this like Greg has to deal with it or like our server last night had to deal with it. I received an email today from a mother who adopted two children from China and they are legally blind, they have multiple issues, they need, they require that one-on-one instruction. And there might be a little bit of help that comes down from the state and there might be some community help that, that helps them deal with this virtual academy situation that we're in right now. But she needs, her kids need that social interaction with other students and that specialized education from teachers that only one-on-one, in-person instruction can give. So to, to give us a one-size-fits-all plan, I understand the school board didn't have a lot of control over what came down from the state, but they should have been at least leading and showing us, hey, we understand the problem here is with choice and we understand that. We're going to leverage our position as the big man on campus, I guess, for lack of a better word, but we're going to leverage our position and say, you have the biggest district in the, in the state, a lot of students want to return to in-person instruction and this is how we can do it. And at least we would have known that our elected officials did their very best instead of just waiting from some instruction from the state level and saying, okay, you know, we tried our best and that's all we can do.
Okay, I appreciate that and I really do. It's not going to be a difficult, it was a difficult decision, but it's not going to be an easy time for a lot of the parents come this fall, especially when they have day jobs or when both parents work, it's going to be a very difficult period. This is a question from Amy M., just came in over the chat room. I'll direct this to Deborah and then if Karen wants to answer behind, that'd be great. Do you support bringing textbooks back to Wake County Public School System in digital and hard copy forms?
I can see the role of having textbooks in the classroom. I think a lot of it now is a financial sort of a situation where we have gone maybe more digital with our learning styles. And students are having to compensate for that. Not every child learns well that way. We have different learning styles and different techniques that have to be used with, with children. So I can see pros and cons on both sides. I think some people like a textbook, they like a hard copy. While I was working with public instruction, you know, I mentioned that I monitored after-school programs across the state and that was K, they were K-12 programs. And in those programs, we had a lot of digital, digital learning, we had other types of learning. But one of my, I guess, things that, that I really grab hold of when, when you're teaching students is their learning styles. You know, everyone has different ways that they learn, they can be visual, kinesthetic, hearings, you know, sight. It depends on, on how the child learns. And when a teacher prepares a lesson, they have to address all those areas. So I can see where textbooks maybe can be used as supplemental materials and they have their place. Although I do think we are headed more towards, you know, computers and the, that sort of learning.
Okay. How about you Karen, from your perspective, working in the classroom?
I agree with a lot of what Deborah said. I also, speaking as a mom, have had kids who really prefer that book in their hand. And I remember when we really started switching everything over to Google and Google Docs, even assessments being done, digital, digital were an issue. My kids really wanted that, where they could put the pen to paper kind of thing. And I think that is similar for a lot of kids and also the access to internet for when they leave the school and having instructional material that's available and a textbook would provide that, even if they are without the internet resource. And I do understand the financial constraint of that, but I also know there are, you know, and I know it's gone down, it's gone up, it's disappeared. I know that over the years, it's done a whole lot of things, a state textbook allotment. But I would like, you know, the money that has been given to be going for textbooks and so that kids who do need that, because there are definitely kids who need a textbook. And in situations when we had the school closure, it would have provided an immediate resource that kids would have had available to them. So that kind of leads into another issue, but I know there are financial issues with it, but that goes into accountability and how we're using money and, you know, that kind of thing. And, but I do support the need because there are students definitely who need that, that book in hand, as I call it, I guess is the easiest way to put it.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. This is a question directed right at Greg since he's talked about his family and requirements for IEPs. Greg, what should be done? Greg, what should be done regarding students with IEPs that require a physical presence and are not suitable for virtual instruction?
Well, I know for a fact with my kids, the IEPs that they were under had a lot to do with speech therapy, and just really, that's pretty almost impossible to do on a virtual level. I think you gotta look at each IEP, what the needs are, what the specifications are, the goals are for that child, and I think for the most part, I can speak for my kids. But I'm pretty safe to say that most kids that are on IEPs right now require physical instruction, physical contact with that specialist and counselor.
Does anyone else want to add anything to that?
I guess just a little bit. I know Karen Hamilton has said she's supposed to be releasing some communication in a few days. I'm very interested to see how they're looking to address that because I, working as a special ed, have concerns, and I've heard from multiple families with concerns and needing that, you know, when you're doing PT, you know, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech. I mean, there's so many things that parents feel like their kids have missed out on services that they are entitled to with their IEP, FIB or BIP, and it's a huge concern. And I'm looking forward to seeing the answers that they come up with.
Alan, I'd like to weigh in on that one if I could, too, just briefly. I used to be the 504 Coordinator when I was counselor at the high school. The 504 Plan is for those that have disabilities that, it kind of levels the playing field for students. It's not quite as restrictive or as an IEP, but it's kind of on the same level as some of the kids. I mean, it could be something as simple as the child breaks their arm, they're not able to write, they're not able to write on a test, and so we'd have to maybe have a plan in place. And we would work with all of the social workers, maybe the school nurse, a lot of the, maybe the occupational therapists, to help each child. And I can see where this may be really difficult with the COVID-19 and trying to get the kids back to school. Some of these children need that one-on-one, and it could be that the school system may have to do contracted services, or we may have to bring in the kids and let them work in small groups or something like that to be able to compensate for the differences in the learning styles that these children will need. So I think Karen made some really good points, and Karen is in that classroom every day, and she knows exactly what these kids are going through to try to get the instruction that these kids really need.
That's great. I had someone ask me the other day, does your grandson have a computer? And they procured a computer just so he can go to his virtual training when they were finishing up this past school year. But the question came more from, what are the low-income families doing for their children when they have the virtual classes? I mean, what does the county plan on doing to help out those talented young men and young children that may not have access either to the internet, whether it's lack of broadband, or even a laptop themselves? Is the county out planning for that?
I know that the county said that they released the resources starting last semester to try and compensate for the shutdown over last semester and that they have ensured Wake County parents that those resources are available to them. The problem is, is not that they have, whether or not they have the means to have the equipment or the resources available to get on a computer, but whether or not they in their particular homes have those resources, the Wi-Fi and the other materials that I think are essential for children to have an effective, you know, educational experience. I just don't think that a computer can substitute at any time for individual one-on-one instruction, and especially in low-income homes where mothers and fathers have to go out and work and are gonna be gone. I mean, I'm seeing on community and community Facebook pages all over the place, neighborhoods banding together and saying, hey, I can offer babysitting at a reduced rate over here, and I can help out over here. So it's really great to see how the communities are coming together to compensate for, you know, the school board's decision to shut down. But I think the issue isn't whether or not the school board has given out the resources. It's whether or not low-income families have the resources available, particularly Wi-Fi and educational material around the home in order to help out.
I appreciate that. This actually question comes in for Steve, but then I'd like everyone else to address the same question. This is from Mary. Do you want to keep school resource officers in our school system?
I know this is a hot topic for a lot of people. I do want to keep SROs. I've had positive experiences with both counselors and SROs in our schools. We are never gonna have a perfect system, and we hopefully will have very good SROs in every single school. The problem, if we do ever, you know, if we do have problems with SROs in schools or if we do have instances where there might be an issue, it doesn't come down to whether or not we just eliminate an SRO or eliminate the system overall. But it comes down to training and proper roles. Let me give you an example. And this applies to SROs and counselors. Counselors, I feel like, and I feel like today in all schools are overwhelmed. They're treated as almost a secondary parent. They're treated as an academic advisor. They're treated as counselors in dealing with disruptions between teachers and students, as well as students between each other. They are overwhelmed. And so what we need to do is draw a clear delineation of lines on what their role is and provide them with the max amount of training that we can. We have those resources, but the resources seem to be spent in all kinds of different places and agendas that don't align with a proper education for the kids. And so I believe that a lot of families are all for SROs that are properly trained and understand their roles in the school.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments on SROs?
Yeah, I'm in favor of SROs, and I know they're also the first line of defense for domestic abuse as well in the school to protect the student and the parent. So I think they're very valuable. I know my opponent was the lone voice that wanted to vote them off last month. So I'm all for safety. I'm all for the resources, like Steve was saying, keeping our children and students safe and the teachers as well. And I think I'm in favor of keeping the SROs.
One of our listeners actually said, "Resource officers are needed for domestic violence protection orders also." So, good points, good points. This comes in. I'll send it to Karen. Let's see. If you had to send a message to teachers who are concerned about their safety, et cetera, when school reopens, what would that message be?
Well, so teachers that are concerned for their safety. Well, I think, considering, I'm looking at how we're going back. I think a lot of that's hard to even have an answer because as an educator, we've not been given specifics on how that's even going to look. I think that, so I think it's very difficult to answer that because I don't even know, we've not been informed yet. As those, and I know that's hard to believe because I get a lot of that, well, you know, you're in the system. No, we've not been given that information. I go by, you know, what the board said yesterday, and I'll say it again. I do appreciate Board Member Martin speaking up for us and asking for those. And he actually himself called it an incomplete plan because that was missing from it. And I truly thank him for that because it is. It's hard to know how we can be safe when we've not been told what exactly it's gonna look like. I do know the governor, when he announced the Plan B for the state, he mentioned that they were sending five masks for all school staff across the state. That was during his speech. But I did not hear anything mentioned about that yesterday, so I don't know the status of that. And they said they're still in the procurement process of even getting PPE. So it's, you know, I'm like, okay, we're July. And what about the, you know, hand sanitizing stations? It's just, I'm saying from my viewpoint, it's very hard to say what that's gonna look like when so many pieces are yet to be put in place. I wish we had more, and we could say more, but it's unfortunate that we're where we're at right now. And hopefully, the board will respect Martin's ask, his asking for a board meeting specifically on staff expectations and parameters about how that will look. Because I think that would help all educators and staff in the building understand what exactly we're gonna be dealing with.
Yes, Greg, Steve, sorry.
Yes, sir. So just to piggyback off of what Karen said here, it's difficult to come up with solid answers without knowing exactly how the teachers feel, which, and knowing how families feel. All those opinions should have been gauged since at least May. There should have been polls that had been done and questionnaires, and those should have been released to the Wake County school system at large. We should have been receiving more information. And this seems to be a trend with a lot of decisions that are going on with the school board. And specifically, you know, in situations with MVP math, with curriculum that's being put out. And just to kind of circle back to a question that was asked earlier about textbooks, I think the reason that the question about textbooks is being asked is because parents are finding it difficult to follow along with the curriculum and what their children are being taught. Every single major publisher offers a digital version of their book. So that should never be a problem as far as financially ponying up for textbooks. So to make a long answer short, I guess what I'm seeing here is a trend, a trend to, of a lack of transparency on the data that we're dealing with, what people want, gauging the understanding of what teachers want and families need, and allowing for us to make informed decisions and proper planning to put these efforts into place, so.
Thank you. When you think of everything that's been going on and you talk about how you handle what the school board or the state's directives are gonna be with regard to how safety's measured, you don't hear enough talk about the other countries that have already opened up their school systems in Europe and Asia. They've not had any spread in those schools. The children seem to be performing fine. Some cases, they only have an opening in the front of the desk for the children and over the top, but the children are kind of sequestered. Some have, some schools are requiring masks, some are not. Some say there's a positive piece of that, and some schools have said, we're not doing anything. We've just social-distanced the children, and they seem to be thriving and they're learning and things of that nature. I read another document that talked about, we've lost in the USA thirty children under the age of fifteen and younger. Thirty children have been lost due to COVID. That's thirty-two many, as far as I'm concerned. But when you compare it to what we annually lose based on the flu, which is a hundred and fifty a year, but at no time during that time period have we ever had to shut down our school system, and those were not considered acceptable losses. But you're talking about an eighty percent reduction, and yet we can't even figure out how to open up our schools. I mean, so we're in a quandary. Yet we're not willing to even learn the lessons being taught to us by Asia and Europe. And their children are thriving, and we're not having the problems that Greg was bringing up with regard to the social interaction for the children. So those are the kinds of concerns that myself, as a grandparent, and my oldest grandchild, he's more excited when he does a virtual school training class when they were in session, seeing his friends, and they were cutting up enough that they would interrupt the teacher. Eventually, that changes, but what I'm trying to tell you is, there's no sacrifice or no, there's nothing that will take the place of that social interaction that children get in the schoolyard or in the classroom with their teacher. And a lot of children are missing that chance to excel and thrive just by virtue of us not making the decision. I hope we learn from Europe and we make some good decisions. Some people think we'll be out of this come January, and not because of a vaccine, but because of politics. When you look at what's happening in the LA school district teachers' union, that's extortion. They want to do away with their competition, do away with all charter schools. They want a wealth tax. They want Medicare for all. And there was a fourth one about improving the status of the teachers or for tenure and things of that nature. That's extortion. That has nothing to do with how do you make the condition safe enough in the school system so you can teach your children, has nothing to do with whether the school should be opening or not. That's the same thing you're hearing overtures from the NCAE here in the state of North Carolina. So if you think it's California and they're a little crazy, no. It's actually stuff that's being promoted here in the state of North Carolina, too. And then I read some additional articles, but it turns out the NCAE says they're speaking for the teachers because we don't have a union here, but they only represent four percent of the teachers here in the state of North Carolina. I didn't realize it was that low. So Deborah or Karen can corroborate that four percent. I thought that was, I thought that was a bit trivial if they're speaking for four percent of teachers, and they probably aren't speaking for all those four percent anyway. So a lot of discussion needs to be done. We want it safe for our children, but we definitely need to make a difference for them. Greg, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I actually stumbled across an article today from, it was a newspaper from the United Kingdom, and there was an epidemiologist that basically said there's no known cases of teachers getting COVID in their school districts. So I find it fascinating that there are countries that are opening up. There are other school districts that we can learn from. And I think a lot of this COVID since March has been fear. We've been pounding fear since day one, and I think we really have to look at, of course, we want every student to be safe, every teacher to be safe. We want to make sure we're doing the right precautions. But I also believe that, to Steve's point earlier, we can't just stop living. We cannot stop and fail these kids that need in-person education. And I think there's a lot of studies out there that we can look at and learn from and implement here in Wake County.
All good points. Did anyone else want to bring anything up before? We've got a couple of extra questions here that I want to make sure we get through so you guys can kind of close with some, at least a thirty-second close. This is a message from Dick. What are the first two highest priorities you want to do when you are first elected? What would they be and why? Let's start with District One.
Okay, all right. I have more than two, but anyway. I'll start out with, I do see families kind of leaving our school system. I'm beginning to see a sort of an exodus, I guess I would say, and for other options. And I think that we need to work very hard in making our schools attractive and accessible for all students. There are a lot of, I'm seeing some reassignment concerns start surfacing. And I'm very concerned also about the low-performing schools that we have in Wake County. I'd love for any of our audience to go take a look at the data that comes from the Department of Public Instruction where I worked. And you'll see that in Wake County, we have thirty schools that are low-performing. And that means that they are rated a D or an F on the school report card. I have eight of those schools in my district. And as far as like a district concern, I'm very concerned about those low-performing schools. Some of the schools are actually even re- Some of the schools are actually even recurring low-performing schools, which means two out of the three years that they did not make the report card grade and had low grades, you know, on the report card. So it would be good for parents to take a look at that because if you were a parent, can you just imagine getting a letter like that in the mail? And they, the school system must mail a letter to the parents telling them that the school is low-performing. And you can just imagine how they feel when they get that letter. Because some people don't have an option. They can't move for whatever reason. It can be financial, it could be a family member they need to be with, a lot of different reasons. So that's something we really need to take a look at because a county as large as we are and with the resources that we have, it just seems to me there would be no excuse to have schools that are on this level.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is have an open door policy for teachers and parents. Communication's huge for me. I'm in sales, I ask a lot of questions, but you know, I have resources and answers. And they say, "Hey, we can do this, but I want to know what your concerns are. I want to know what your pain points are." So one of the things is, the parent-teacher relationship is powerful for the student. And if both those two are aligned, there's nothing that can stop us. So I want to have, if I'm the school board, if I'm elected to the school board, I would like parents and teachers to look up to the school board and say, you know, we can go to the school board if we have any issue, any problem, and they can listen to us and they can hear our concern. So that's number one. Number two is, you know, the curriculum and bringing back education instead of indoctrination. And I could say this for my kids, there's, American history is not being taught. And we would not be, the country would not be the way it is right now if American history was truly taught in our schools. We need to be taught to love our country, to be patriotic, to be proud where we live. We're the freest country in the world, we're still a great country. And I think it starts with our kids, and I think we have failed them the last 20, 30 years.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, I have four platform issues. They're on my website that I want to focus on, but just to combine them into two, I want to take a common sense, practical look at the curriculum that's being offered in the Wake County schools. For example, MVP math, I think, needs to be shifted to a traditional sequential approach to math instruction rather than, if you've looked at, you can take a look at the MVP math Facebook page and see the compelling arguments that are being made against MVP math, the statistics that point towards a nosedive in academic performance among Wake County schools overall. In fact, there was a concerned parent who was sued by MVP math because of his criticisms of the curriculum, and they dropped their suit, but the school board continued with this program. And it's just, it has not been effective at all. So that would be one of the curriculum areas that I would focus on. The second one, or the second thing that I would change is transparency. Whether it's transparency in reassignment decisions, there's, for instance, a community or neighborhood who gave a compelling argument two years ago as to why they shouldn't be reassigned. It was a, it was a community that had been there for over 15 years. And the next year, they were reassigned and gave another compelling argument, but in fact, were reassigned that year. And they were told by my opponent that the reason they were reassigned, after giving all the data to my opponent and never receiving an answer back as to why they were being reassigned, finally, when they were reassigned, they were told, "Well, we wanted to do it just so we see what would happen." That's literally the answer this community was given. So there needs to be transparency that goes on in decision-making when we're talking about our children and their education. So a strong look at curriculum, especially MVP math, and a goal towards transparency, whether it's releasing our decisions and our data weeks ahead before we make that concrete decision, or just allowing parental input, that transparency needs to happen.
Thank you. Karen?
Yes, and I do agree with the transparency piece, but I'll head on to other issues. Some has already been mentioned. I really believe in listening to parents, students, all staff. And I think that's a big difference, not just teachers, every staff member in the buildings. And also community members. I feel like it's really important that they feel respected and like to have a seat at the table. And as a board member, I would be open to anyone, even if we do not see eye to eye. I think it's important that we look to find a common thread, something that we have in common, something that we all do believe in, because I believe it's there. We all are wanting success for students, we are all are wanting kids to thrive. And so that is something I really feel like is important. The second piece is the educational piece. I've just seen a lot, and I just feel it's very important that any student, no matter what their background is, what the parent's background is, what zip code they are, what race, ethnicity, anything, they must have equal educational opportunities. And we must provide them with a sound education. And any educational supports they need to rise academically, that is what we are here for. And all the staff in the schools need to have our support to do that work because it's not easy work. But that's something near and dear to my heart, that every kid know that they can do well, we believe in them, and they are going to rise academically. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be the last question, and I can't believe we're already coming up on an hour time period. It flies when you guys are giving us some great answers, but this is a chance for you to close out what you're doing with your campaigns. Where can people find out more about you and get involved with your campaigns? We'll go in the same order, so it's a chance for you to do a closing and tell us where, how we can find out more about what Deborah, Greg, Steve, and Karen are doing to run for office.
Well, thank you so much for this opportunity. I would love for everyone to please take a look at the website. I could have talked all night, Alan, you just make it so easy for us with your questions, but I have so much, I guess we could say. But please take a look at the website so you find out more about me and my platform and what we're trying to do for all the kids here in the county. It's pricketforwakeshoals.com. And I would love for folks to go there and take a look. And Karen is exactly right, and Steve and Greg, as we talk about tonight, we're just a solid team. I think we're on the same page for a lot of things. And student achievement and student growth has to be at the top of the list for all of us as school board members.
Greg?
Yeah, so you can find more information about me on votegreghan.com. And I also have a Facebook page as well, same thing, votegreghan. And I appreciate this, Alan, I appreciate this opportunity to express, you know, while we're running, performance is also huge as well for the students. But I'm really looking forward to engaging with parents, teachers, community, you know, everyone in the community. I'd like to know what that thought process is, what their feedback is, what their ideas are. Therefore, I can help represent them in a better way when it comes November 3rd. So thank you so much again, appreciate it.
Super, thank you. Steve?
Well, I just got my palm cards in today, so there it is. steveforwake8.com or steveforwake8 on Facebook. I'll be knocking doors, start tomorrow. But I just wanted to share a little bit of a personal experience from me, I didn't mean to get emotional. My daughter went through a really difficult time a couple of years ago, and it was a teacher that helped her and really allowed her to leave the situation that she was in. And I can't tell you how grateful I am for teachers and for counselors. I see them as, you know, Superman and Superwoman in our lives. And I want to go to bat for teachers and for students. And that's why I decided to run. I really believe in our school system, but I believe that we can do better. I believe that we can do better for our kids, for their education, and preparing them for a world, not just here in the United States, but for a global world. I'm going to give you one stat, and it's something that I would like to focus on. Only 4% of African-American, only 4% in the tech sector employees are African-American right now of the major tech industries. These are the kinds of things that need to change, and we can do that. We can do that through innovative plans to change the educational outcomes for all our kids. And so like the teacher who helped my daughter, I want to be the school board member that is there to help thousands of kids through Wake County. That's how strongly I believe in this. And so I appreciate the opportunity, Alan, for us to get our word out. And I appreciate every single candidate here for running. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Karen?
Okay, hi. All right, you can check out my website, it's karen, the number four, and then wake.com. And karen, the number four, wake on Instagram and Twitter. And then Karen Carter for Wake County School Board on Facebook. And love to hear from you. And if you're interested in volunteering, we'd love to have you be a part of our volunteer campaign team. It's really going to take a lot of hands-on deck. And I'm really hopeful that it will be successful. And appreciate everyone listening tonight, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I think we've been very fortunate to have four of the five new candidates running for the school board for our county to try and make a difference. Thank you to Steve and Greg for your veteran status, military service. We're fortunate also to have two veterans of Wake County school system in Deborah and Karen, so we're only missing Rachel here, Rachel Mills, who would be our fifth candidate. She just wasn't available this evening. But talented people, all have either had a child, go through the Wake County system or themselves, and now have currently children in the system. And they're asking to be that voice and make a difference, their policies about trying to make a difference not only for their children, but also their districts in this great Wake County that we all live in. I think the one thing I would tell you is Greg's comment and any others echoing the open door policy, access to members of the school board are critical to the parents with the child's best interest at heart. A child's born in a certain zip code based on where that school and that zip code's performing or not performing. The school board's jobs help us make it perform properly. But that should not dictate a child's zip code should not dictate the potential for that child's future. And everything you've heard tonight from these four talented candidates make that difference. A couple of things I want to tell you about is, we are doing numerous town halls like this. I will encourage to bring any of these four along with Rachel to some of the regional town halls we do on a weekly basis. Next Monday, I think Karen probably will be there for sure, she was at the last one. But Steve, Western Wake Republican Party's meeting at the Beer Garden, Cary Beer Garden. I'd encourage you to come and introduce yourself to the people there. Show us those new, brand-new palm cards, that would be great. If you haven't, the others haven't gotten them, you need to get them. You need to have palm cards, that's all people want. Give me your palm card so I can see your stances. In addition to that, this Saturday, Swing for Congress is actually co-hosting with Back the Blue Wake, and we're doing a Back the Blue Rally on Saturday in Apex. Just go to @SwingforCongress on Facebook and you can find out. We've got 600-plus already registered to either attend or interested, so I would highly encourage your support to the minimum blue, the thin blue line. Next week, we have two big town halls scheduled. One of them is on Wednesday, and some talented young, it's the future of conservatism. We have a lot of talented young people that have come up through the ranks. They have not taken the beaten path, they've taken the path less traveled. And as young Republicans or conservatives, they've chosen to take the conservative path. So it'd be interesting, I'd encourage you all to take a look at that, that'll be next Wednesday, at 6:00 PM also. And on Thursday, just like we're doing the school board tonight, we're doing all four Wake County Commissioners. If you don't believe that politics are local, look at the four talented people here. You can't make a difference for me. I can push dollars down from the federal level as a US Congressman. I can dictate how certain money is set aside for whether it's charter schools or the public school system and things of that nature. But these four talented candidates here are the ones that are going to make the decision for the future of Wake County's education and for our young people. So please get to know them personally. Same thing next Thursday, we will do the county commissioners, who will talk about why you need to find more conservatives running for county commission to make a difference when it comes to, they're the people that set the stage for what we pay for at our county taxes. So if you don't like what's going on with your tax system in this county, you need to put some conservatives in there to speak on our behalf. So some great town halls coming up, just like tonight was. So I want to thank all four of you talented, this has been a great opportunity. I'm waiting to see how many people actually attended. On my guess is we'll have thousands of people that have got to know Deborah, Greg, Steve, and Karen, so this is a great opportunity. So thank you for all of this. And thank you for all who have attended tonight, and we look forward to seeing you, if not in person in Apex on Saturday, maybe Cary Beer Garden where you get to meet some of these talented candidates in person, but also for our town halls, we got scheduled through Swing for Congress next week. Thank you very much and have a good evening. Take care.
Thank you.